Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. This is the City of Lamarck City Council Workshop of August 12th, 2019. Let the record reflect, all members of council are present. If you'll please stand for the invocation and pledge. Mayor Proten.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we've come, Lord, thanking you for this day and certainly for this city that we call home, for Lamarck, all of her citizens and her appointed and elected officials. And, Lord, we pray that you would, through your wisdom, lead us, Lord, to healthy discussions that we might do what's best for every, every person that calls the city home. Guide us tonight, and we thank you for everything that you are doing. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This time, we're down to item four, citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public? At this time, any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council on a specific agenda item, limited to three minutes. In compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. And I don't believe anyone has signed up. Moving on to number five, under Old Business Discussion relating to adopting Resolution Number R-2019-007. And at this time, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Jackson, and he'll lead us through the workshop, and then we'll go right into the regular meeting.
Mayor, thank you, council. Good evening. Under the new format that was decided to be used at our council retreat during this council workshop, I'll go through each one of the items, one by one, and read them off. If you have questions about those items, we'll discuss it at that time. If you don't, we'll skip through them until the next one, until we get to whichever ones you may have questions about, and then from there, we'll go into our regular meeting. So first one on here is Old Business 5A Discussion related to adopting Resolution 201907-0017, Amending Resolution R-2014007, which is a current emergency medical services billing and collection policy. This item was tabled from the special meeting held on July 15, 2019. Anybody have any questions on that item?
I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Before we do that, Tink, this new format of meeting that we've, that we have now, is it designed to give the, those that would come to the meeting more participation? Or?
During this workshop time, yes. If they have questions, we can answer direct questions about the items.
Okay, so if they have questions, they can actually ask them during the agenda item in real time?
In real time.
Okay, just clear, we already knew that, but we're just trying to clarify it so that you all can have an idea what's happening. On item five, I am in favor of us moving toward amending the ordinance, the resolution. I'm concerned, though, about, and this is just concern, about those, those items being put on persons' credit report. That's, that's part of what we're talking about. We're talking about as we, as we build for medical services for, for, for citizens of this city, we're talking about deciding to, to use collections to, to recoup those things, those monies we expended, and we're also talking about putting those items on the credit report. I'm concerned because I just don't believe that, that charges related to health should be put on credit reports. I believe that credit reports are used to hinder, to handicap, and to restrict people. They've been used to limit people's ability to advance economically, and so that's a concern I have. Now, I'm open to, to listen to the council, but I'm just saying, I've, I've seen those historically be used to, to deter, to deter folks' rise economically.
Mayor Proten, before I have the chief respond to this further, I just wanna, I think, what we're looking at with this was the old resolution was so restrictive that it didn't separate non-citizens of Lamarck from citizens of Lamarck. And so now our citizens, citizens of Lamarck have borne all of that cost, even though if there's an accident on I-45 and the person's not from here, our citizens are the ones that are bearing, are bearing that cost right now. And I think what we're looking at with this is not to, not to make it a tool that's going to hurt our citizens, but to make, but to remove some of the restrictions to the point where we can help our citizens by making sure those people from other communities that come here that use our services pay their share of it, so we don't have to bear that full cost on taxpayers. I'll let the chief go on from there.
Yeah, I think Mayor Proten, almost what Tink had explained to us, I think the first purpose of this is to loosen it up so we can start to look, and again, in that way, we can bring it back. And before we go to the credit reporting, and then if it's a desire of the board not to, and that's something that we can eliminate when we, once we, once we look around, see what the best practices is around us, see what other communities are doing, that way, we can take a look, see what we believe is gonna be best for the city of Lamarck, and then bring it back to you to get some direction where if other communities are sending it to the, to their credit report, and it's a desire not to, then that's something we'll pull out. You know, and/or if we want to use the collection agencies towards non-residents compared to the residents. I think the first step for us was just to kind of loosen up the ordinance so we could start to dig in a little bit deeper.
Yeah.
And then start to go. But, sir, I would definitely agree with you on that. You know, when you see or when you hear about the collections, or not the collections, the credit reporting on somebody's credit report, and so many people work so hard for it, and the last thing I would want to do is deter somebody from calling our service because they're worried about where it's gonna end up financially for them. But it looks like, looking over the previous and what we had discussed last time, I guess probably three or four weeks ago, a lot of our citizens, it really shouldn't change. It looks like we'll still be able to, and I would assume our, the best practices in other cities is gonna be almost probably very similar practice to what we've done. But we've taken out some of the language where it says we have to use a certain company or we have to use a contractor. We're wanting to remove that out of the ordinance, and then when we come back to you, once we've done a lot more research and been able to see what they're doing, to see how we can move forward with that.
Yeah, and that was my, again, and I'm open, I brought that for the council to discuss, so even, even the public. And I like everything that we're doing. I do believe that we need to pursue collections. My only, and it was a concern, and that was it. So otherwise, I'm in support.
Sir, I would agree with you, and I think when we put together the final package, not the final package, but probably the first proposal for you to look through after we've met with city manager, and he's helped dial us in a little bit, it'll almost be, I would assume, some of it will be like a laundry list where we'll be able to go through and take out. We don't want to do this. This is not a practice after the second collection attempt. We want to move out, but we'll be able to take it and then adjust it for how we want it to do it. But I would agree with you. My personal feelings are the same as yours, believing, the personal feelings out of it for me because you've tasked me with bringing you what's the best practice, and then that way, I'll take the feedback, and then we can adjust it for what's gonna work for us here.
Thank you. Any other questions on that one? Okay, New Business Item 6A, Discussion relating to adopting Resolution Number R-20190018, approving an emergency event policy under federal law for city employees. Any questions on that one? No questions on that one. Item B, Discussion related to adopting Resolution R-20190019, approving the continued receipt of bingo prize funds collected after January 1st, 2020. Any questions on that one? Item C, Discussion relating to adopting Resolution 20190020 and approving an interlocal agreement to participate in the ESC Region 19 Purchasing Cooperative Fee to be assessed in conjunction with all city utility accounts, amending Appendix A by adding Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lamarck, Texas, to reflect the amount of such user fee. This'll be the first reading on this ordinance. Anything on that one? E, Discussion relating to adopting Ordinance Number O-20190015, establishing the juvenile case manager fee of $5 per conviction and adding a new part-time juvenile case manager position to the municipal court. Any discussion on this one?
Question. In the, in the job description, I see serves, provides, conducts, participates, notifies, develops. The one thing that I don't see, and maybe I don't need to see it, but it's a question, is advocate. And so is, is this, is this position designed to be a position that would be an advocate for, for juveniles?
Do we have anybody here for a question?
Absolutely.
Come on up here to the podium.
How you doing, Ms. Bell? You could've said, "How you doing, Mr. Bell." Then we'd have to tell them we were cousins and it was a long story. Did you, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Did, did you develop this?
Yes.
This is great, first of all. Secondly, I just, I just think that we need to probably add so that we can remind the manager and the staff and the families that this person will be an advocate for their children. So that, so that any barriers, any fears, any concerns hopefully will be removed. Can we do that?
Absolutely.
Is that okay, Tink?
You just want to add that one word in that first sentence? I mean, is that what you're talking about, say, to advocate, direct, manage, supervise?
I think that should be a bullet point all over the town.
I completely agree. Yeah, I think there's lots of similar job descriptions out there, and I know that's exactly what you want, is for it to be an advocate. That's the whole point, right?
Absolutely.
I agree, it needs to be in writing.
Great work.
They're not acting as an attorney, though.
I'm sorry?
They're not acting as an attorney.
No, absolutely not.
As child court, uh, sometimes uses that same word as an advocate as the court-appointed attorney.
Yeah, that, I'm kind of worried. Carlos, what do you think about that?
I don't, I don't think it makes a difference.
So we'll come up with a board that's very clear that advocacy doesn't mean representing, it means pushing them a better direction, helping them move a better direction.
Trying to represent them, right, represent, put them in a position. I get you, that's right.
I think we could, I think we can have that in there pretty easily.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on that one? Item number F, Discussion relating to voiding a contract with Lamarck Cougars Youth Organization. Questions or comments on that one? G, Discussion relating to authorizing mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with the County of Galveston for County Road Mon Project, City of Lamarck Street Improvements. Any question on that one? H, Discussion relating to the approval of change order number one in the amount of $16,880 to increase the original contract price from $792,780 to $809,660 for a cumulative change of 2.129% to the JTM Construction Waterline Rehabilitation Project. Questions on that one? Item I, Discussion relating, relating to authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Gulf Coast Center for Transit Services and appointing the city manager as representative to the By County Transit Evaluation Committee. Any questions on that one?
The only question I had on that was, are we free to also attend that meeting? Just for instance, there's not any kind of...
I would assume it's gonna have to be a public meeting.
Okay.
You're talking about the, about the transition committee?
Yes, the By County Transit Evaluation Committee.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Yeah, it's supposed to be. And we will make sure the council knows when those are real.
Yeah, since September, I think, in that time?
They're hoping to have the first one in September.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions on that one? Item J, Discussion relating to authorizing the mayor to execute standard utility agreements with the state of Texas, acting through the Texas Transportation Commission and the City of Lamarck for the I-45 widening project from south of FM 1764 to north of FM 519. Questions on that one? Comments? Item K, Discussion relating to the approval of the final plat of FM 1764 Plaza being a subdivision of 1.2114 acres located in the WK Wilson League Abstract Number 208, City of Lamarck, Galveston County, Texas, also known as Time Wise, southwest corner of FM 1764 and I-45. Any questions on that one? Item number L, Discussion relating to the approval of the final plat of Sunset Grove Section 1 being a subdivision of 12.54 acres located in the Stephen F. Austin League Number 4, Abstract 2, Galveston County, Texas, also being a partial replat of lots 13 and 14 of Delaney Road Acres, Volume 18, Page 760, GCMR, east of Delaney Road, south of FM 1765. Any questions on that one? Item M, Discussion related to ratifying city manager's approval of expenditures in the amount of $43,270 to the Texas Pride Utilities LLC for costs associated with emergency sanitary sewer rehabilitation project for the Lehman Street Patricia Drive area. Questions or comments on that one? Item N, Discussion related to adopting the 2019-2020 City Council Vision and Goals. Questions or comments on that one?
No.
I'm done, Mayor.
Great job. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Madam Clerk, will you call the time, please? 6:19, we will, I need a motion to adjourn that.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the workshop.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we will be in adjournment of that meeting and go into the regular city council meeting. My great honor this evening to have some presentations and proclamations and introductions. Know many of you are here for that very purpose. The first, Item 3A, is the introduction and swearing in of a new city employee, Fire Chief Todd Weidman. We're also having a reception for him immediately following the meeting. You're all welcome to attend that. Also want to welcome Todd's parents, who are in Florida, Bill and Elizabeth Weidman, however, they are watching over the internet to see their sons sworn in this evening. So, Chief, if you'll please meet me in the front. I believe you have some guests with you.
Yes, sir. Chris Hongory.
Chief, if you'll face me, please. Raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, both of office, I, Todd Weidman. You solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Fire Chief for the City of Lamarck, of the State of Texas, and I will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations, Chief. One more, now it's picture time.
Right here, one should be. Just Patty wants one on show.
So many.
What would you like to say?
Thank you.
Proclamation.
We also have this evening a proclamation for fair housing. I'll go ahead and read this into the record. This is a requirement that we must meet to pursue some grants that we're working on. Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck proclamation, whereas Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas, the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas, the National Fair Housing Law during the month of September provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success is the goal of equal housing opportunity and only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now being resolved, the Lamarck City Council urges everyone in the community to become aware of and to participate and support the fair housing rules and regulations. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council, by virtue of our authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2019, as fair housing month. And the City of Lamarck can do hereby urge all citizens of this locality to become aware of and support the fair housing law. Intestimating where I witness my hand and the seal of the City of Lamarck, this, the 12th day of August, 2019, Bobby Hocking, Mayor.
The play recognition is next.
I'd like to read from something the citizens said, sent in to one of our employees. Shortly after our new city manager began, he implemented and expanded a customer service policy for all employees who serve the citizens of our great city. This policy, which requires excellence in customer service and places the burden of providing a positive interaction with citizens on our employees, also states that each employee is responsible for recognizing their fellow employees when they witness excellent customer service. We have an employee with us tonight that has been recognized by fellow employees for providing excellent customer service. And I would like to call Ms. Felicia Ward up here this time. I'll read you an excerpt from a letter received from a Lamarck citizen about Felicia. I'm writing this to express our appreciation with Ms. Ward and all the help she has given LGI Homes in regards to the Painted Meadows community. She is always quick to respond and resolve any issues we may need her assistance with, and always with a great attitude. In addition, our permanents are always turned around in a timely manner. As a home builder, this alone is of great value. I'll read this next sentence, but what the heck, I'm here, I'm gonna do it. We also build homes next door in Texas City. And I only wish we had a Felicia there that we could depend on like we do in Lamarck. Felicia Ward's hard work, positive attitude, and dedication to the City of Lamarck makes her an invaluable member of our city team. It is with great pleasure that I present this customer service's excellent award to Ms. Felicia Ward. You guys ready? Who is speaking for you this evening? Are you happy?
Actually, all of the alumni association, please come up here. All of y'all, everybody.
I mean, he's gonna be empty after this.
Hi, baby, hi.
It's super cool. Coolness. Hi, Amy.
Abby. You know why, I'm not gonna say it. Okay, so the folks that stand in front of you here today are the Lamarck Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Not all of them, but quite a few. I, after, last week, I asked the city manager if we could get the Alumni Association on the agenda recognized, because I want the citizens of Lamarck to know what you've got going on in the city. So this group of citizens, our citizen volunteers who are here working all the time to make Lamarck a better place to live. And not only, wait a minute, you're in the association, aren't you?
No, she was at the annual, so which...
So this Alumni Association went from, what, eight members a year, two years ago, to 46 members today. And that's because of the outstanding work that the Alumni Association does in the city. city and outside of the city as well. One of the things we're really, really proud of is the association's partnership with MAD and their No More Victims Campaign. You're going to be seeing our association interacting with MAD on a state level. There's a lot of things that this, that our Alumni Association does, and I'm sure I'm going to miss some of them. But like I said, the partnership with MAD, our, we're, we're working on a partnership with a nonprofit from Galveston, don't want to speak too much about that yet, but you're going to see some very big things happening there. We have, of course, our movie nights. If you haven't been to one, watch our Facebook page and come to one. Bring the kids. It's a really nice night. Kids, we have a movie thing set up out back with popcorn and snow cones and pickles, and it's a great family event. So, bring, bring your kids, bring your grandkids, or don't. I mean, there's, there's even folks just have a date night out there. They also do several speaking engagements. We do stuff at the schools as far as career days go. They work cooperatively with other CPAs in the area, so we're real proud about that. But our state, our, our association went to the state conference, the state CPA conference in, where was it? San Marcos, last week, and Lamarck. Now, there are six CPA regions in the state of Texas, 300-something associations, probably 200 or so are active. Out of the entire state of Texas, Lamarck, your city, won the state, the CPA Alumni Association of the Year for the state of Texas. Sometimes good things do come in small packages, right? So, and, and there's another thing that I do want to mention. And, and I guess, Barbara Cook, Barbara, you're the, you're the president of the state Alumni Association, correct? Now, just to clarify, Barbara didn't vote on the award, so she had no say so. It was, it was, the award was given to the Alumni Association for all of the hard work, outstanding, and community engagement that they've been doing, and it showed. So, this is a winning team that y'all got here in the city of Lamarck, who are making things happen. If you want to be a part of this winning team, we have, we have a Citizens Police Academy coming up pretty soon, and I'd love to see you sign up, learn more about the police department, learn more about the city, about criminal justice. But not only that, we get to know about you, just like y'all get to know about us. So, it is a great organization, and I, and I think that some of the things that you see this group is doing is really going to inspire you to step up and, and help make tomorrow better. And another thing I forgot to mention, we also have a student citizen police academy. Without that, without the Alumni Association, we couldn't put that on. We, it's an outreach to the students in our community to do the same thing that, that they get to learn with the adult CPA. So, again, your state award went to the Lamarck Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association for Lamarck, y'all. For Lamarck. And we do have several city employees who are part of the Alumni Association as well. So, anyway, thank you, everybody, for coming, and thank you for doing what you do for our city. I really appreciate it, and so do the citizens. And come be a part of the winning team, y'all.
Congratulations, everyone. Great job.
So, continuing on with our meeting this evening, item 4A is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, we call the time.
6:31.
6:31. We'll close the regular meeting, open up the public hearing, conduct public hearing to hear public input regarding adopting ordinance number 0-2019-0012, adopting the revised FEMA flood plane maps as a condition of continued eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Once, twice, three times. Madam Clerk, will you call the time, please?
6:34.
6:34. We'll close the public hearing, reopen the regular meeting under old business 5A. Consider recommendation to adopt ordinance number 0-2019-0012 as delineated in the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? B, consider recommendation to adopt resolution number R-2019-0017, amending resolution R-2014-007, Exhibit A, on current emergency medical services, patient billing, and collection policy. I'll entertain a motion. Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to offer the amendment that we remove the tool of reporting these two credit agencies.
Been an amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, is that non-citizens?
Uh, citizens. Citizens.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Yeah.
I think Chris.
Chris, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we'll vote on the ordinance as amended. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm.
Second.
There's motion a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6, I'll take A and B. Approval of city council special call meeting minutes of July 15th, 2019. B, city council special call meeting minutes of August 5th, 2019. I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Motion is second. No discussion on minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 7 is the consent agenda. Is there any councilperson wanting to pull anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move. Second.
Motion is second. We've already discussed in the workshop. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no executive session this evening. Requested announcements. I do have one announcement. Former Chief Bob Doolittle passed away. His services are tomorrow. He served the city of Lamarck for 53 years as, as, as a firefighter. His services, the visitation is at Crowder here in Lamarck from 6:00 to 8:00, I believe, tomorrow evening. And then the service is at St. Michael's Church at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday. That's Robert "Bob" Doolittle. I think we even have a fire truck named after him. And our prayers and thoughts go out to his wife and his precious family.
Mayor, I do believe they will be transporting him for interment on that fire truck that he's named, that's named after him.
That's awesome. I'll also do, on behalf of council, I'm doing a proclamation for the service as well. Any other announcements, requests? Okay, we got a party going on for Chief Todd back in the back, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.